Pursuant to Governor Baker's order suspending certain provisions of the open meeting law and imposing strict limitations on the number of people that may gather in one place. Due to the outbreak of COVID-19, this meeting of the Town of Berlin Select Board will be conducted via remote participation. The Town of Berlin will post an audio or video recording of proceedings as soon as possible after the meeting on Town's webpage. The Town's YouTube channel and approval minutes will be posted to mytowngovernment.org. And we'll call the meeting to order at 7:01. We have approval of the April 20th open session meeting minutes. Any comments or questions?
No, they look good.
No, fine.
Can we just kind of clarify about the Connect Wellness? That it was, the vote was taken subject to the Town of Hudson's. The access, accessibility of Connect Wellness through the Town of Hudson to the property and the public forum completion. Is that good?
Those were the contingencies.
Yep. Yeah. Okay.
Marlboro, right?
Hudson.
I think I got the wrong one. Hudson, okay, my bad.
Yep, so we'll take a vote then. Do I, did I hear a motion? I didn't hear a motion, did I?
Motion to approve the minutes there.
Motion seconded.
Okay, we'll take a vote. Keith, aye?
Stone aye.
Hawkins, aye.
Sounds like unanimous vote to me.
Aye, aye, aye.
Aye, aye, aye. Okay. Margaret, do we have any correspondence?
There is correspondence, but I'm going to address it. This is pertaining to a complaint about nuisance dog. I'll address it in my TA report.
Okay. And general public comment? Nope, I don't see anything. And is our Fire and EMS Chief here?
Yeah.
Okay. Do you want to do your town administrator report, Margaret?
I don't want to hold up Chief when he gets here though. Okay, we'll start with COVID. Things are looking even better after the last two weeks. The percent positivity in Berlin has decreased from 1.91% to 1.79% over the past two weeks. I did check all the links in my TA report this time. I think they're all working now. I intend, we have our safety protocols that remain in place in our town buildings. I intend to reopen the town offices on Monday, May 10th, subject to our own COVID safety protocols and all of the state's protocols or safety standards for office spaces. So I have asked department heads for feedback or for their input on safety protocols to assure we have everything in place and that we are as protected as possible. Just for public information, masks will be, will still be required inside the building and there'll be other measures that we're going to take, but we will be complying with all state regulations. I understand that there are available vaccine appointments at the courtyard in Marlboro. And I know a few people who are going there to get their vaccines, so people should, should proactively reach out and see if they can schedule their appointments right next door. An update on, let's see, jump to finance. We received an email this afternoon at 3 o'clock from Bob Conry at the school district notifying the school committee actually, and sharing with us that Berlin's operating assessment for Tejantos is decreasing $3,780 and the capital assessment is decreasing $16,831 thanks to the refinancing of their debt. I have not really delved into the email yet because it came this afternoon, but I at least wanted to give, share that, share that information with you. The 23 Linden parking lot resurfacing project IFB will be reissued on Monday, May 10th. Up until that date, we have some timelines that we need to follow as far as postings and multiple, multiple locations, newspaper locally with the state. So I'm looking at an anticipated bid submission deadline of Tuesday, June 1st for that, for those bids. At which time there'll be a public opening of bids. The next item I have on my report is for the iWork software. So I guess a few years ago, the town purchased Viewpoint software or subscribed to Viewpoint software. Viewpoint, while it's very popular and serves its purpose, it is also very expensive. And I think the initial investment in Viewpoint was funded through a grant the town received. Richard has done a lot of investigation on various permitting softwares that could do the same thing as Viewpoint at less cost. He has found iWork, a software that he could subscribe to for $8,000 a year versus $11,400 a year for Viewpoint, and it would not have an annual price increase of 7%. So this would be a one-year contract. I've reviewed the contract and it is a one-year contract renewable, if not terminated within 60 days prior to the expiration of the term. The iWork software would prefer, perform all the functions that Viewpoint performs and it would also include a licensing module for the Select Board's office and a module for the Fire Department, for Fire Department inspections. The one big thing with iWork or any other of these permitting softwares is we need full buy-in from boards, committees, and departments that would have any stake in this software because it's going to be imperative that we be able to communicate with other boards and committees and departments as far as inspections or, or check-offs on the workflow on this system. Sorry, I went a little overboard on that one, but I will keep you posted on that. The next is municipal electricity aggregation. You may have seen the email that, that was sent today. Well, we've been going back and forth. The Colonial Power, who is the town's contractor to manage our constellation electricity aggregation agreement, has notified us that the contract's going to be expiring in November 2021. They want to proactively go out for proposals to take a look to see what energy prices are going to come in, come in at. I expressed concerns that they were looking at a timeframe that was right smack dab in the middle of town meeting. And she said that, that she's hearing that from other towns, but I think that we have a path forward here in May that we'd be able to look at indicative pricing and then follow it up with executable pricing. She's also aware that the town can, can refuse to accept any proposals, any and all proposals in the interest of the town. So there'll be more on that. I've asked the Energy Committee to meet the week of May 10th and hopefully they can meet again the week of May 17th to be able to review the, the pricing that we'll be receiving. The One Stop, the Community One Stop Projects Portal is going to be open from May 3rd to June 4th. So that's when we will be submitting actual applications under the grant programs that are part of the One Stop program. Mass dot shared, Mary, can you give me a sign when Chief comes? Cause I'm gonna, I'm just rambling. The Mass dot Shared Streets and Spaces Grant, we are expecting delivery of the button activated pedestrian crossing beacons this week. At least two of the benches have been delivered. We're expecting the third bench if it hasn't been delivered today. And Dave, Chief and I met briefly with Peter Wheeler at the First Parish Church this morning to talk about location of picnic tables and benches because we want to be sure to coordinate with them since these items are in their, their front common area. We may be moving some tables toward the back. They're talking about putting up a gazebo to make a more friendly community space in the back along Carter Street. So hopefully we'll continue to work closely with First Parish Church and make that, that village center as, as friendly as we can possibly make it. Okay, I mentioned in, under correspondence that there has been a nuisance dog complaint lodged with the board. When a complaint is lodged, it does call for a select board hearing. The select board is the hearing authority under Master General Law, Chapter 140, Section 157 on nuisance and dangerous dogs. I have, I have protocols that I put in place in a former community. So as far as the, as far as the setup or the, the format of the public hearing, I have some, some things that could guide the board's hearing on that. Meanwhile, Chief is working very closely with the ACO to communicate with the owner of the dogs who are entering another person's yard. But I will talk with Chris, the chair, about setting up a hearing date and we can then notify the parties. This is a formal hearing process where oaths are administered and, and all of that, all of that stuff. So Chris, if you don't mind, I'll talk with you about that.
Sure.
But, but before the hearing, could we get a summary of sort of what our options of finding are? I mean, so let's say we agree with a nuisance, then what, what is the various things we could do?
I have that all laid out in protocol, Scott.
Thank you, thank you, thank you.
The next is the Bullard House weatherization. The Historical Commission met last week and they unanimously recommended or want to recommend an increase in the funding available for the weatherization project. I've asked the commission if they could attend the board's May 3rd meeting, subject to approval by the board chair to present their recommendation on the additional funding. Our River Bridge Development Agreement subgroup, subgroup will be meeting with the Cenies this Wednesday to listen to any updates they have on their end and reiterate our concerns on unmet development agreement commitments. They have asked to meet again with the Select Board and for now, I have, based on the board's last discussion, I have indicated to them that, that the board's preference, at least as it stands right now, would be to have the planning board's recommendations and report in hand before any further conversations. I think, wow, I think that's my whole pile. Thank you.
Okay, questions for Margaret or?
The, the vaccines that, in Marlboro, they still have to go through the state website to get the appointments?
Yes, and they should, folks should go to vaxfinder, V A X F I N D E R dot mass dot gov to sign up for appointments.
The iWork software, we're gonna, you're gonna hold off signing any contract? Do you get sign-offs on those, all those other committees?
Not till I get sign-offs from those other committees, but we, we will need a commitment from those other committees that they will participate. The workflow is going to require, it's going to involve emails sent to those boards and committees for reviews of, of permit applications. They're going to need, we're just going to need their buy-in to say, okay, yes, we'll use this workflow in order to do our sign-off. So I wasn't going to hold off on signing the contract till we get approval from them, but I would like to confirm with them that Bill participates.
Okay, and then is there any integration between this and the finance and accounting software so that we charge for permits? It automatically goes into, it's like an account receivable waiting for June or?
So it's, it's actually a, a third-party depository. They use PayRock. And there are several other highway departments using iWork and other communities using PayRock. We currently use Unipic, so this would be in addition to that.
Okay, thanks. Good timing. That's the end of my questions. Are the Chiefs here?
Okay, good.
I'll hold until we're done with Chief Margaret for my questions for you.
Okay.
Chief, you, they're ready for you if you want to. Go ahead. There he is.
Hey, nice to see you.
Same with everybody, how's everybody tonight?
Good, how are you? Yeah, I was gonna say, you, how are you is the more important question, isn't it?
Very, very well. I went back and kicked butt out of that CrossFit this morning, so it's like.
Nice, nice.
Like, so what do you want to start with? You want to start with the report?
You bet so.
Sure.
Okay, in, for the past, in March, we had, I'm going to start with the emergency responses. Everything's going pretty good. And there's a second one I want to share that's kind of dear to my heart here, but it's like, well, we had two mutual aid structure fires that we went to. That's a, not a good thing, but it's good for morale and it's good to get the troops out, get the training rolling, see it come into place and see how the, how the gears mesh. So I enjoy watching that. And everything went really well. There was no injuries. The other towns had a lot of paperwork to do after it, but that's the best part about mutual aid fire is a lot less paperwork. So it's like, but last month we had a total of 68 calls, 2.2 per day. There was 12 fire-related responses, 27 EMS responses, two motor vehicle accidents that required transport, and then public service requests were 24. And then there was one search that was kind of like a very dynamic to start. If you look at my second bullet here, it kind of has some explanation for you. But we got a call late in the afternoon for a family that, that was disorientated on the trail system between Allen Road in, and I'm drawing a blank on the other side, Lancaster Road, excuse me. And so we, we established command on the Allen roadside where we first went. But this, the district dispatch did a really good job as they kept the people on the phone. And there was a mother with a young daughter, like six or seven, and an 11-week-old baby. They were like, they weren't in distress, but they weren't, didn't know where they were, needed some help to find their way back to the car on the Allen roadside. So we put, from the time that we got the call, it was 21 minutes till we made contact with the family. Brought them back out to trailhead on the north side of Lancaster Road, did a quick medical eval, nothing was needed. Put them in eight, 6A2, drove them back around Lancaster Road to the parking area on Allen Road. And there was a lot of dynamic movement parts to a search. You gotta get on it early. You gotta get in the right spots. But I don't know if I'm blessed or, or, or if I'm like, yeah, the other way if I'm blessed. But it's like, I've got to do a lot of them in my career. Some of them didn't turn out good. And it's like, but this one did. And it was a smile and they handed the baby kind of like out of the ambulance and right there, just a little tiny thing. So it was like, that was pretty cool to see. And the mother was very, very happy to get back to the car. And the little girl did a fan, fantastic job of like staying brave and staying helping her momma. So it was kind of like, interesting. Like I said, it's a lot of moving parts of those. There was good coordination between the blue team and the red team there. We put people aggressively into the pass. In a little bit of credit, it's got to go to your, whatever teams that you have that do the trails. They have them color-coded in that area and that's what we use to find them really quick because they said, we're by this and by that. We looked on the map. I carry the maps in my car, off the conservation areas of all of them. And we were able to say, I see, I need you to go here and see where they are. We made contact really quick. And it's really good to see the guys dive into that. And they, they were structured in the, in, in, it was, it went really, I was very happy with the way it went. And it's like, sometimes those can turn into kind of a cluster, but it didn't at all. And we got some good reports back from outside agencies that the radio communications were really good. And it, and that's how other people gauge you. So it's like, if it's a cluster, it shows up on the radio and we didn't have that. So it's like, I was proud of the guys. They all dove in, pulled, kind of pulled the boots up, went to work, so to speak. So that was a really good one and it's like, it makes up for all those other kind of ones that you're going to deal with. But the other thing that got on there is just like a little update. We were going with numbers from 18, 19, 20. And then what we got so far, 21 as of 13 April, we had 235 incident responses this year so far. So it's like, and another thing that's kind of like showing is, is back-to-back calls, like 6A1 is the backup handling, 6A2 is the primary. And I think in the last two or three weeks, they've both been out at the same, either there's to the same call or on separate calls at the same time, at least six or eight times. So it's showing like a, there's a trend of multiple calls and it just shows you, and that's how it's happening. You're getting a little busier. So it's like, but the personnel responded well to, to those calls and everything's gone really good. So I'm happy that way. I know Dave, you got Dave's report. Dave does a pretty thorough report from the Fire Marshal. And I read that, when he sent that to me before I sent it off to Mary and the TA. And it's like, and he gives you a lot of information there. And if there's any questions on that, don't be afraid to send. Some of them could be lengthy, so I don't, this might not be like the forum to, to ask those. But if you have any questions at all, he's kind of like got out there in the community every day. So it's like, we need, have to answer any questions on those. Feel free to fire me an email and I will get the answer that you need or find out what's going on this project or that project. And I again have to like congratulate the working relationship between the building and the Fire Department Inspection Services. They work really well together, Rich and Dave. They get a lot of things done behind the scenes that people don't see, see. And it's, I came from that background and I get to see what they do. And they're working really hard now to move forward with this new permitting system. And it's like, there'll be some changes there. It'll be easier for the people in town to get stuff done. And also it will give us a better tracking system from our side and from also from Rich's side. So that looks like that's going to be a goal unless there's something last minute that comes up with that to laser it up or whatever. So it's like, but it seems like it's pretty good. What else do we got? Oh, the emergency management thing is like issues are doing really, really well. There's a lot of interest in the area to do, again, and this is just preliminary. And I'm waiting till it gets to a point where I can, because you, your board, the Select Board has the final say on how the Town of Berlin does the Regional Emergency Planning Committee. We have to have a LEPC, which is a local one, no matter what. And, but there's been a lot of interest in doing a regional one with, and let me count and make sure I don't forget anybody. Berlin, Bolton, Lancaster, Clinton, Harvard, Devon. So it's like, it's, it's, that's, that's huge to be able to put all those resources together. And if someone has something, we can go and help them and vice versa. But you also have to have a local preparedness level that you be prepared locally. And that's one of the things that I've been doing too behind the scenes. And when I get to a point, we get our emergency operations center set up in the training room in the cellar. I want to invite you guys down to see the capability that we've got through grants. So only, all that equipment is just from grants. So we'll work really hard with that. And, and the other thing that's in is like, they call it the ESEM, the Electronic Comprehensive Emergency Management Plan. That's in right now under review at the state level at MEMA. And that comes back, and again, that's also a document that goes to you for final approval. It goes once to the state to get kind of like the rough edges done. And, and then we bring it back. I presented to you, there's some roles and responsibilities your board may have as the, like governing board in the Town of Berlin. But there's also a lot of the other people in town, like the, the department heads and stuff have roles and responsibilities as part of Emergency Management Plan. And it's a all hazards approach. We look at, we look at everything, not just a flood or a storm, any kind of a, any kind of an event that we may have, we try to be prepared for. So it's like, that's the direction we're moving with those. And there's a lot of movement. The Harvard Chief's kind of, he kind of in charge of the REPC model. He's like the lead for that. And he's got a lot of energy. He seemed really good. I don't really know him that well yet. I'm still learning these people. And, but we're in a really good direction and it's like some old plans, all they needed, they, they, I got a lot of information from the older ones. Just kind of wanted to be, needed to be dusted off and kind of like updated. And I spent a lot of hours doing it. So it's like, but it's in a good place now and we just need to get some stamps on it. And then, then it comes to you and we'll, and I'll send it to you. So you have a lot of time to digest it. It's, it's like an 80-something page document. And it's like, you can, because you guys have some background with the town that this might be something that needed to be in there that I don't have in the long. Also, I want to send it out to like Chief Galvin. He's a, a really good person to bounce stuff off. He has responsibility in the plan as the, as the blue team chief. And also some, some of the other department heads. I want to send that out just for your review first. Then we'll bring it back, tweak whatever we have to tweak, send it back to the state one more time, then we'll bring it home. And hopefully you guys sign off on it when it's a finished product, which shouldn't be too long. So it's like, let me see what else I got here. There's a lot of stuff. That kind of stuff is kind of near and dear to my heart. So it's like, did it for many years. What else? Oh, the deputy, oh, on the regional emergency planning, they want to call it the, the Shoba Valley Regional Emergency Planning Committee. So it would be NVREPC. So that kind of had a nice ring to it. I said, yep, I, I would vote for that. So that seems to be a common trait up in, up in this area in the Shoba Valley. That's a really popular name. Most people probably think of why when you say that, but we're going to think about it with emergency management. So it's like, the, so what else? The, oh, the deputy's been really busy. He's working on, he got one grant on, for the state in like 9,300 and something dollars to buy, replace all the hose that delivers water from the vehicles to the fire. There's four different sizes and they're all got their own job and he's coordinating that. And he's also working with the blue team chief, Chief Galvin on doing a, a radio grant for the, I forget the name, it's public safety something. It's like, I think it's 20 grand per department, but they can put resources together and, and when, and I hate to say a line of duty death, but when we have some bad incident happen in public safety, the NIOSH, especially the Fire Department, there's some federal agencies that come in and do really, really in-depth reviews. And when you look at those things, always in the top three to four bullets is communications and lack of interoperability with the communications. Like I can't talk to Northborough or I can't talk to Marlboro. So we're buying equipment that will enhance that communications interoperability and make it safer for people all the way around. And it's like, I hope I never get, have to do, be belong to one of those reports. So what else? Your ambulances are all rocking and rolling, ready to go for another year. We got the, actually for two at the BLS level, we're at the Basic Life Support. So it's, we had the state come in and do some inspections. We had to do some, update some of the SOGs that we have on the EMS side, but that's, they always, there's, there's no way you can get through one of those reports. It's just one of those things that are always kind of, even if you're really good. And the guy says, you guys do excellent, but you need to do this. So it's like, that's exactly what he said. So it's like, we're working on those now. EMS coordinator is Kevin Colley, wears a lot of hats in the community. So he's really skilled at that, doing a great job. And him and I are working to make, to fix those. And one instance on that though, is the older ambulance that has had a cracked in the, in the back door on the inside where it's got an overlay of like Formica or something like that, and it was cracked. And the guy said, I got to get a new one of those. So that came yesterday, Friday or today or something like that. And they put it in today. The guys took the ambulance out of service, the backup one, took all the hardware off the back passenger side door, put a, put the new face on and then put all the hardware back on. So we, for, it was $160, I think, to buy the piece, but we didn't, there was no manual labor involved because the guys just jumped on it and got it done. I think the ambulance was only out of service an hour, an hour and 15 minutes while they did it. So those are the good things. And then we got no write-offs this month, but we're already working on a short list for next month for you. But that'll be included in the, when the April report goes into you. And then just kind of like a heads up at 30,000 feet on the ambulance billing. In March, we were able to bill for 28,000. We got credits for 22,000. So our numbers are coming closer together, which is better. They're not real high, but they're better. And it's like, and then the top, bottom two is total billing to year from July 1st till the end of March. And then the, the credits that we've got since the beginning of the fiscal year to the end of March. That's kind of like where we are. And it's like, yep, good month. It's been really busy. A lot of stuff going on. I've been on a ton of calls with the guys. I love going on the calls with them. A lot of stuff going on. I've been on a ton of calls with the guys. I love going on the calls with them. So it's like, even at my age, I still like going. So it's like, everything's going really well. The apparatus are all in good shape. Rocking and rolling when we have to. So it's like, it's a pleasure to, to be in your community. Thank you for the invite bringing me in. And I still enjoy it every day. So it's like, thank you.
Well, we enjoy having you.
Thank you.
Peg and Scott, questions?
I was trying to look up quickly what the EMS receivables were for fiscal year nineteen and twenty and was not able to find them. I just remember being on FinCom and really pushing hard that someday we might hit a hundred thousand. And so the idea that we're at a hundred and twenty nine thousand in the end of March makes me know that we've done at least some significant progress from the years that I was on FinCom and probably better than we did the last couple of years. I just, I didn't have that data quickly.
Well, if you need it, shoot me an email or something and I can send them all to you so you can compare everything, you know what I mean? We got them all. I got them within arm's reach of the desk. So it's like, nope, thank you for that. That's like, and again, the whole system, we, we worked with the TA to streamline that whole system from the very beginning all the way through to what we could. And it's like, I think it's starting to pay dividends now to us. And we just gotta get better and better at it and move forward.
And some people might not know, we, with that, that, those receivables are used to both offset the cost of EMS services in the town a little bit, and some of it is set aside on a regular basis to offset the cost of new ambulances when they're needed. So these are, these, the, the getting these receivables are due as a direct correlation to being able to keep tax rates down.
Yep, spot on, Scott.
Peg, did you have any questions?
I do. So chief, on the hoses, I'm assuming to fill up the tanker, do you, I, I grew up calling it big hole. It's the water on Linden Street.
Oh, I know it very well. I was just down there the other day talking water about it.
Yeah. So do you, when you fill it up, do you just toss the hoses in? I mean, because I know that there was some concern a few years back with the former chief of siphoning water out of those ponds just because of all the sludge and grossness in there and the damage that it could do to the to the hoses. So are those hoses like regularly checked and things like that?
Yes, that, those get used all the time. And, and the hose that we use to do that, remove the water. You have to draw a vacuum on them. There's a special thing called a primer on the truck that you pull, makes a lot of noise. And if that hose failed, it wouldn't pick up water because it would bring, it would bring air, allow air to come in. That's one of the first things that you find out that one of those is bad is it won't pick up water. So you look at it, you find holes, you find abrasions. And we just last week decided to reach out to planning and to, and to the DP. And I still haven't identified the scope of it, but to put in what they call a dry hydrant there. Right now, to fill it, we can use small hose, which is like three inch, we can do five hundred gallons a minute with it. It's not hard. If it's just being filled, not an emergency, we don't have to hurry. But when they fill it with a, during an emergency, they're using six inch hose. And the stuff is heavy and it's two ten foot lengths. It won't do it with one. You have to do two. And they wrestle with the hose. It's kind of like wrestling on a boa constrict, to be honest with you. So they drop it in, attach it, drop it in, tie it to the side of the pump, then you got to pull it out. I bet you each length weighs over a hundred pounds. So we talked about, and they had all the equipment at the old firehouse on, on West Street there to do a dry hydrant. There's a bunch of them in town. You see them all over. That's probably the, one of the two best spots in town for a dry hydrant. But you got to go through positively planning board and DP to do it, get permits and, and I have to get, I have to get some type of a license to be able to do it. I, I just haven't looked at the fine print yet to figure it out. But that will shorten the access time for the water down till maybe even just one length of hose or you custom make a small length of hose to do it. And it's just for that fill site. And it's like, and you go to work and, and one guy, like, the whole thing is you want to bring speed into that, you know what I mean? And it's like, and it's, it's slow, takes two people to do it and you still got to hustle, hustle, hustle. So it's challenging to get it done quickly and efficiently. But they do it all the time. So they're really good at it. But still, there's a time thing in there. And we do do those hoses. All the hoses get tested once a year. And those ones that like get tested the most of any of them because they use all the time. We don't have a, a ability in the station to hook into an outlet and fill the hose or go to a hydrant or go here or there like that I was used to when I came here. So we, we have to do what's available and what the town can do. And that's like, is go down to a big hole. Or there's another really good one on Lower Soy Hill Road right by, is it Walnut Street just after that? You go by down there a little bit. So there's a good one there too. So it's like, so whichever one's available, I know they had a brush fire. It came up Saturday. It was just around noon time. It was in between like Central Street and Oak Street and that, on that little ridge there. They did a nice little quick burn in there, got out someone's fire, got out and ran. And it's like, they put resources on both sides and they, and I think they filled up at both those spots. Big hole, like Pig said, and also down in Soy Hill. So they top off the tanks here, then they come back to the firehouse.
No, I was just checking. As I said, last, last time this was mentioned, it, you know, there was a discussion on who owns the property and who's responsible for trying to keep the pond tidy and the damage to the hoses. So I was just kind of curious where that had changed and grown since this came up a couple of years ago.
They probably just use it more now because there's more activity now. We're using, like you go to a, for instance, we have a car fire on the highway. You get on a big hole and fill the truck up. And it's not too bad now because it's kind of nice. You get to see that stuff. It's challenging in the winter when it's cold, you know what I mean? So it's like, it's like you're gonna, sometimes luckily that moves, so it keeps it pretty much ice free unless it's really cold.
Yeah.
I watch it every time I go by there and I just like, it's not the best way to do it, but it's the only way. So you just got to get good, be good at what's, what, what you got available as your option.
And don't suck up the heron. He's been hanging out in the other past few nights. So, yeah.
Those are one of my favorites.
I saw him on Saturday.
Did you?
Flying right overhead. Yes, I did.
Yeah, I love those.
Chief, forget how mu- how much water can those trucks hold?
It all depends which one you got. Like the, the new tender that's coming next month. It's rapidly getting built down to factory. That's going to hold three thousand. It all depends on how you apply it, Scott. You can, you can use big water, get a big fire, it goes really quick. But it's like, it all kind of goes into training. And where I grew up, we had like, we were like seventy thirty, seventy municipal water, thirty percent outside the water district. So they used to galange back the nozzles and you went in and you didn't open the nozzle. So you were like, had the fire in your nose. And then you put it out like that. And now you can't really do it that way anymore because you have to flow a little bit more water. But it's like, you gotta, you gotta put that, no spraying on smoke, you gotta put on the fire. So it's like, it's a training issue. And the guy's training really hard at it and they try really hard at it. And luckily, knock on wood, we don't have a lot of fires. So it's like, I keep my fingers crossed every day. So it's like, but they're ready when they need to. And a, and a couple of times I, I've seen them stick their nose in some stuff. I would, I would stick my nose in there and any places that we go with them guys and they, not afraid.
Well, thank you so much, chief.
Thanks, chief.
Okay.
Thanks, chief.
All right. Nice to see everybody.
Nice to you.
You too.
All right. Take care of yourself.
Okay.
You too, definitely.
All right. Peg.
All right, Margaret, a couple of quick questions. So to kind of piggyback on the viewpoint software. Are there any contracts or anything that we're going to run into issues with trying to get out of if we decide to go the new route?
No, because viewpoint, we'd be able to meet viewpoint requisite notice.
Okay, all right. And did you by chance get a call from Senator Cronin today?
I did not get a call from Senator Cronin today. Why? Is he sharing good news?
No, no. I had reached out again about the, to, oh, the woman's name, can't remember it off the top of my head. Thank you.
And I reached out to her too, yeah.
Yeah, about the hundred thousand. And he kind of pretty much said that to try and get the hundred thousand, oh, I took notes on it. What did he say? Pretty much it would be easier if we could break it down to say that the cost of the tennis court, basketball court repair was and to fix the snack shack was. So he's looking for like lower dollar amounts, you know, like twenty, thirty grand, he could probably be able to get to us. But because it's a bond bill and the money has to be raised, it doesn't look promising that we would get the whole hundred thousand. So he asked if we had specifics on that. I said, we have to, you know, I can't imagine that we just like randomly pulled a hundred thousand dollars out of the air to say, fix the courts, fix the snack shack. So he might be.
Numbers on the courts. We can, I can dig those up. It's been a little while, but.
Okay. So yeah, he might be giving you a holler.
Okay.
Well, guess I'm done.
Okay. We'll move on to old business and the annual town meeting preparation.
All right. So the first thing is that I updated the, the town, the select board's town meeting action calendar again. There were a couple of things that needed updates, the date of coffee talk, the deadline to cause delivery or mailing of the warrant and finance committee report. So I just did a couple of updates to that. That's in your agenda folder. We also received the legal reviewed town meeting motions last week. So in your agenda packets is the red line version and a clean version. And I just had a couple of things on, on this. First of all, I, I do ask that the board make a recommendation on that tax title revolving fund article. And the reason for that is because chapter sixty, section fifteen B A actually does say upon recommendation of the board of selectmen, or I don't know the exact language. But that is something that I would ask for a recommendation on. And the other couple of things, article thirty one, town council did confirm on the, the limit on the number of marijuana retail establishments that it, the motion would read three. She asked to speak with the moderator about the form of motion. And I have not gotten an update on that yet. But I thought ideally it would be great to have all the motions in, you know, in proper form on the motion sheet so that there aren't questions or any confusion at town meeting. So hopefully we'll have all that resolved well ahead of, of printing the motion sheet.
She was also asking for another public hearing on that, wasn't she?
Yes, she also did. And so I notified the planning board of that and I haven't heard anything back.
Before, I, I happened to be at that planning board meeting where they discussed it. And the idea that it was going to be three, not two, actually was part of the discussion there. And so even if they don't get to have another one before town meeting, they, they did discuss two versus three actually at their hearing. So it's not a foreign concept.
That's, and that's good to, to know. And the only other thing that I have at the moment, I've already mentioned about the Sunny's request to come to the board. They also requested to go to the finance committee. So I forwarded that to Stan. On the wetlands bylaw, I've gotten a few questions and I just want to just want to make a couple of things clear based on town council's feedback. First of all, that is a general bylaw proposal, so it requires a majority vote, not a two thirds vote. The other question that I received was about a hearing on the bylaw itself. The bylaw itself, under chapter forty, section eight C, which is the statute the commission operates under, does not require a public hearing for adoption of a bylaw. It does require public hearings for adoptions of regulations under the bylaw. So if the bylaw was passed and they wanted to promulgate regulations, they would have to hold public hearings on those. So that's just a couple of tidbits I've gotten from town council based on questions I've received. So.
I, I've had a couple of questions. Sorry, I meant to write this up to it, haven't. And so if you need more time. But someone approached me saying their concern about the public, about the wetlands bylaw is that the select board and conservation commission could change the bylaw after it is passed. That once it's in the town bylaws, that we have the ability to tweak things as we see fit. And I did not think that we could make any changes to bylaws without it going back to town meeting.
That's correct. It would have to go back to town meeting.
What, what is probably true is that after it's in the bylaw, as you just said, they could probably get regulations based on it, which could be the interpretation of the wording that is in the bylaw. But, and all of they, so they can do regulations, but they cannot actually change anything in the bylaw without coming back to the town.
No, no, the town meeting would have to vote that.
So Margaret, on any of these bylaws, will we be seeking, you know, like finance approves five, nothing, or, you know, planning approves five, nothing, ZBA says no?
That's a great point because the warrant actually contains the finance committee's recommendations. It would be great to have plannings on here as well, but I just don't have those yet. So we put, we put, you know, I can transfer FinComs from the warrant over to the motions. That's totally fine. But I'm going to be going to the finance committee meeting on, that's Wednesday night. So I can just double check with them that they want the recommendations from the warrant moved over to the motions.
So for example, like the wetlands bylaw, is it up to the conservation folks to go to ZBA planning to say, you know, give me your vote in writing? Is it for us to go? Is it, I'm for any of them. I, I was only scrolling and that's where I stopped scrolling.
Their, their recommendations are not, recommendations are required. This is just potentially something that might help or, or delay the actual passage. Yes.
Any recommendations that are voted, we would add, for example, the capital planning committee met last week and voted on a couple of, of articles. We'll add, we'll add their recommendations as they made them on just specific articles. So we could add recommendations as we receive them, as long as they're from the source, from, you know, from the board of committee that actually voted.
So besides article number three, which is the tax collection software conversion, that was a mouthful. Are there any other ones that you would like to see from the board?
Oh, no. I thought it was article twenty one, the tax collector revolving fund.
That's the one. Yeah.
Okay.
No, there's, there's nothing specifically I'm, I'm requesting other than that one because the statute asks for it.
Okay. So do we want to talk about that tonight? And do we drop it on next week's agenda to give you a vote? Or how would you like it done?
For the tax software?
Correct.
No, for the, for the tax.
It's titled revolving.
Revolving. Article twenty one.
Article twenty one. Right, right. I'm sorry. Well, how do you feel about it?
I'm fine with the recommendation. I'm fine now. I don't know what's going to change in a week. So.
Right. You want?
I will move it to, I, I would move to the select but recommend article twenty one.
Seconded.
Okay. Is there anything else to be said on the motion?
I can just, I can add to your recommendation pursuant to chapter sixty, section fifteen B. So it's clear the statute asks for that.
Okay. Thank you. If there's nothing else, then we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
Okay. One last thing to add to next week's agenda, huh?
See you going, Margaret. You're all set.
Thank you so much.
Okay. Are we all set on the annual town meeting prep? For now?
Um, yes. Moderator has confirmed that he'll be at coffee talk on Thursday evening. And he'll go over town meeting layout, times, dates, handheld voting devices.
Okay. And, and is there anything else besides that for prep for the coffee talk?
I want to say that I, I am surprised about the number of people who seem excited about the handheld voting devices.
We'll definitely have to have a show and tell at coffee talk.
I don't show until a coffee talk, but I, I thought, I somehow thought that would be more controversial than it is. But, but I think people are, the people I've talked to are very excited about it.
Yeah, people, people have asked for them for years for that. Hey, so on the coffee talk, again, to push it, Dave and his borrowed new blinky sign, which is really slick looking, what do we want to put up there for an announcement again, just to try and make more people aware that we have it just, you know, coffee talk, Thursday night, six thirty via Zoom? I mean, do we want to give them any directions on where to find the Zoom link?
How many characters do we have?
I don't, with the, it's a huge new sign compared to our old ones. So I don't know. I mean, I can always start large and then whittle, I suppose.
Well, as much as I love to give them the link to the meeting. Well, as much as I love to give them the link to the meeting, I don't know, link to the meeting works as you're driving by it.
No, it doesn't.
No.
Click here.
Yeah, click here. Here.
Um, it might be nice to, um, say something about the content of the coffee talk that we're going to be talking about town meeting and the articles or the warrants, um, only because, you know, they may want to talk about, you know, what's bothering them.
Yep.
Or, or a concern.
All right. I'll come up with something. I'll, uh, I'll whizz it off to Dave. I could, I gave him a heads up over the weekend that, um, we talked about it tonight. All right. I'll come up with it and then he can tell me if I babble too much or if we're spot on.
Okay.
All right, cool.
Is there anything else about, um, coffee talk? And this is Thursday night.
Correct.
I know.
For, for all, for all to, uh, write in their calendars.
Yep, six thirty. Click the Zoom link right now.
Click.
It's on the town website, right?
Yeah, I think it's on my town government.
Yeah, yeah, it's on my town government as well.
I think Mary put it up online, too. She's got the coffee.
Yeah, and I, and I, yeah, and I will push it again on, um, the two unofficial Berlin channels to make sure that it, it goes.
Okay. Well, if we're all set, then we're going to move on to TA goals and objectives work session with the select board. I, I kind of put this on the agenda, I guess, with Margaret's approval. I just wanted to, you know, shoot out an idea to the both of you. I think it might be a good idea to do the input from the public on June seventh and then do a working, uh, session to follow, um, at another meeting to include, you know, things like, you know, how many we're going to narrow down the goals or if we're going to, you know, how we're going to pick them and that kind of thing. I didn't know whether it would be a good idea to have the input during a working session. So I was kind of throwing it out to you guys to see what you thought. And, um.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead.
I'm just, I'm just the TA, but you know, I think I, I would, I would like, I would appreciate input before the board does the, the sticky notes and board, uh, because that way the board is clear on what you're working with. To get input after that is going to be kind of after the fact, after the goal setting itself. So, um, some sort of order like Chris, um, suggested where input can be gathered beforehand would be probably really helpful.
Cause they're thinking sort of on the seventh, we would sort of go over our list, see if there's input from the audience, potentially even the raw list, uh, a week where people could send feedback to places, including department heads, uh, and then take our lists and the feedback and put something together the following week.
Yeah, that sounds good. I mean, I'm, I'm all about the feedback. I just think that, um, then af- after the feedback, we need to sit down and figure it out.
And I agree that if we do, if we somewhat did a completed document and then got feedback on it, that, that seems a little backwards. You're right.
Right. So does that sound agreeable to both of you?
Mm-hmm.
And I was also thinking about if the, um, if the board's been vaccinated plus two weeks, all, all of us, um, you know, we could meet in person. Otherwise I was going to say, does it, uh, you know, does it make sense to, um, meet in person and, um, wear masks?
Uh, we're talking about June seventh or June fourteenth or both?
Um, I, I, I guess both. And that may be another discussion that we have to have as far as, um, in-person meetings and that kind of stuff. I mean, I don't know what everybody else's timeline, but I got my second vaccine today.
I mean, I'd like for us to start meeting back at the town hall upstairs. Our teeny tiny select board room just won't fit all of us. And if any of the public come to want to visit us, if we go upstairs, there's plenty of room on the stage for all of us to spread out. You know, someone can stand by our board and write, people from the audience can yell, you crack the windows a little bit, you shut the doors and, you know, after we're done and it's all nice and safe and, and good.
And that's, you're talking about eighteen seventy town hall upstairs.
And you, and you, and you must be talking about the feedback meeting.
Yeah, well, both, both. I mean, yeah, I mean, if, if Margaret's starting to open up the buildings, then I think as, as the select board, you know, we kind of need to lead the way to say, hey, you know, we're, you know, uh, we're going to go first. So, you know, here's what we're going to do. And then maybe it's an opportunity for other, uh, committees and, uh, you know, to do the same.
Mm-hmm. Okay. All right. You know, I just wanted to throw that out there. It just seems, it seems silly to me that if we have to wear masks, that they can see us better on the Zoom.
Right.
Then, then wearing masks, um, you know, in, in, in a, in a public forum.
My only hesitation, although I have some opinions, is that I still think we're at a point where, uh, state regu- state, uh, uh, knowledge and recommendations change here and there. And sort of what is allowed and expected now could be different than it is in June. And I would not want us to do anything that is contrary to any executive order or even recommendation from the place. I, I, I kind of hear more things going to people vaccinated in a well-ventilated space with some distance. You know, we probably can get away with things, but I, I would wait till I heard more from the science and the health officials before I said we would go do something like that.
No, I mean, we can always plan for both. We can, can, you know, we can, we can do this in June and then we can go to the town hall. So just have it, um, both plans kind of like in action. And then sometime mid-May, we decide, you know, here or down the road.
And I was really happy to hear on the news tonight that, um, you know, outside is, you know, minuscule as far as your chance of getting COVID. You know, but you, you know, and if you have a mask, but, uh, you know, even if you don't, it's, you know, they're thinking about not having public need to wear masks outside.
They are.
Especially when you're distant, so, yep.
Right.
Just waiting for the CDC guidance. That's all.
Yeah, this, yeah, there's a nice little article in, in the community advocate, again, the paper that I get that talks about, um, Northboro leads regional vaccination site in Westboro. So there's definitely more towns around us that are stepping up and doing things. So hopefully more folks are out there, you know, getting vaccinated and staying safe and taking care of themselves and loved ones.
That's right. Okay. Well, I just wanted to, um, you know, run those things by you. Um, we can, uh, move on now to new business and approval of the, uh, junk, old metal, secondhand articles, dealers license for, uh, Berlin Auto Parts.
Mary, would you like to, um, fill the board in on where this is at as far as reviews and everything?
Oops, you're on mute.
Yep.
I was on another screen entirely. Hi. Yeah, all, I think everyone has okayed it.
All the department heads and, and all.
Yeah, I think everyone has, um,
Yeah.
given positive feedback.
Okay.
And Mary, this is in addition to their class three, right?
Yeah, they, they are intertwined in that the restrictions and the conditions of one cross point to one another. So I think that this is supposed to be an accessory type, um, license off of their class three junk. And so that I don't think scrap metals are supposed to exceed the car. But that's probably really not an issue because the amount of car scrap that's going through there has got to be exceeding the whites. You know, the white guns.
Okay.
Thank you.
And then, and then the summertime, the board in the old days used to physically go and tour. But in recent years, you've deferred to your inspectors, your, your department heads to go do that inspection for, for you around July or so.
Yes. And I was wondering what, how Scott and Peg felt about that, too. You know, perhaps we could just let department heads know that, um, we'd love for them to do the site walk at Berlin Auto Parts this summer or, you know, if Scott or Peg, unless you're really interested in going.
I think they would have a lot more expertise in this than I will.
Agreed.
Okay. So why don't we just, um, if, if Mary or Margaret could let department heads know that need to go, that they can set up a date and go.
Okay.
And then, um, is there any other questions before we take a vote on the license?
I'm afraid to almost ask because I don't want to jinx this, but I know in the past that there's been issues with a, in a butter regarding, um, the junkyard. I haven't seen anything come through. Is it kind of all quiet on the Western front with that?
Mary?
Chief Galvin's feedback was that while he'd received some complaints, he had no issue or no conditions or anything that he wanted to attach to the renewal of this long-running license. So. Thanks.
Good. All right. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the license for Berlin Auto Parts, their, um, junk license?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. And we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
That's unanimous. Um, the next thing on the agenda is the appointment of Beth, Beth Christensen to the recreation committee through May thirty-first of twenty twenty-two.
Yay. Yes, yes, I was gonna say, sounds familiar.
Whoops.
Oh.
Whoop, that was, sorry.
That was Nora, that was Nora chiming in and voting. Hey, hey.
I was excited that there's someone more joining the recreation committee.
Absolutely.
All right. So, um, do I hear a motion for that?
Motion to approve for us Christensen to the recreation committee.
Second.
Twenty twenty-two.
All right. Um, we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
Go rec. Yay.
Yay.
Um, the next thing is, uh, the road opening permit. Updates.
We just, um, uh, we just approved a road opening permit and Mary very kindly updated the, um, the form to include some important information and important contact information in particular for applicants. And, uh, my recommendation would be for the board to approve, um, the updates that you see before you on this form.
Once you know it's my first road opening permit, it still takes me a while to think of like, what road was closed? I don't remember a road being closed. This is to take off the asphalt to like do something underground and put it back. I get it now.
Yeah, we just approved one for EverSource for natural gas. So.
Yep.
All right. Did you want to vote on this, this evening?
If the board, if the board.
I'm fine with voting on it.
Yeah.
I make, I'll make the motion that we approve the, uh, road opening permit.
Seconded.
Okay. And we'll take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
Great. Thank you, Mary, for making these updates.
Yeah. And the job description updates for approval.
The only labor driver, the board already took care of a while ago. So I've scratched that through on your agen- on the agenda in your agenda folder. It's still posted on my town government, but you had already taken care of that one. So it's just library assistant and, um, COA van driver. The library assistant, um, job is being posted subject to the approval of the board and personnel committee on this, on this, um, job description. Uh, Bob Hodge says this accurately reflects the duties of the library assistant. And this is in the format that was provided by HRS, similar to the, um, labor driver one you, you saw. Same thing with COA van driver. Um, in this case, the personnel committee has recommended approval of it. Um, and personnel committee will be acting on the library assistant one next Wednesday. So I ask for your approval of these job description updates.
Okay. Do I hear a motion to approve the library assistant and the COA van job descriptions?
I'm assuming the library assistant one is going to be conditional upon the personnel committee approval?
Yes, it is. Yeah.
I, I will so move the approval of the two job descriptions as presented.
Seconded.
All right. Then we will take a vote. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.
Okay, thank you.
All right. And we're down to our favorite portion of the agenda, which is the board questions and comments and liaison updates.
I think I'm, I'm good. I got mine out during the TA report.
And then. Are, are you good, Peg?
No, I have a couple.
Oh, go ahead. No, I'm, I'm good. I actually already asked about having the department heads do the site walk at Berlin Auto Parts. So that was it.
All right. I only have a few. Um, so again, um, as much as I troll newspapers, I also troll Facebook. And, uh, there was an appreciation to Addison Muldoon. Uh, I guess this young girl, who is a student of the hands-on nature, uh, raised some money to plant some trees with the, uh, bake sale that they had going on down at, uh, Earth, Earth Day this past weekend. And let me see if I can get it right. Tricia Electric, uh, I guess matched the donation in town, too, to put in some more trees. So like we did with, uh, the young gentleman that I boo-hooed over, um, you know, would like to do something for Addison. As I know, hmm, uh, would like to do something to, for Addison as well as a certificate of appreciation. I mean, my only concern is that I don't want to miss any other, you know, something that any other little kid is doing in town because I didn't happen to catch it or no one happened to, to see it. But I think it goes a long way, um, for the board to be able to recognize, you know, the little residents of the town that, you know, we sit here on Monday night and talk budgets and, uh, bylaws and do all like non-fun stuff that this gives us an opportunity just to step back and, um, you know, saying thank you to this little girl for, for going out and doing that.
She's, she's a very cute little girl, too. Like, my Zoe is their best friends.
Oh, oh, yeah. So if we could, um, you know, Mary, maybe come up, if you could just kind of, um, you know, copy paste something of the certificate from the other small gentleman a couple of weeks ago for something for Addison. I'll go find it on, um, Facebook and send it around to everybody, um, for that. So thank you for doing that. Again, it, um, it just, it, never mind. Okay. All right. So moving on, um, Old Home Day, I received an email, uh, from AJ Moses, uh, that, uh, AJ co-hosts an arts and crafts fair in November, and he didn't know if Old Home Day was ever going to make its reappearance in Berlin again. Question was, oh, I don't know. Great one. I'll ask. Uh, I know it was never like a town sanctioned event that a lot of folks stepped up, um, you know, to make it happen and reached out to vendors and people to get it going. But obviously this year isn't going to work. You know, with COVID, and we're just kind of sort of out of time considering it's April and usually Old Home Day is September-ish. There any thought to maybe putting something in motion for this next year? Or Old Home Day or calling it something else or doing anything?
I think we need to go out and beat the bushes and see whether there's somebody who wants to sponsor it.
Yeah.
Margaret, you're muted.
Muted.
All right. Well, now that there's a, the, a fully functioning recreation committee, is that something that they want to pick on?
I can ask. Um, you know, I just didn't, no, I s-
Or even find, or even helps find someone who would want to if they don't feel like they can handle it. Or, you know, get it, get assistance.
Well, you know, what I'm thinking too, probably before we start going and, uh, beating the bushes for people is that we need to come up with almost like an outline of what needs to be done because I don't want somebody to stand up. Like I don't want rec to stand up or Lions to stand up or some other outside organization stand up and go, we can do it. And then a quarter of the way into it, they realize, holy crap, we did bite off more than we could chew. Um, you know, so.
It might be up to the group, how much?
They want to do. I don't, I don't know. I mean, I was never involved, um, you know, besides the pie eating contest, um, which that picture is still floating around. Thank you very much.
And cornhole, Peg.
And cornhole, cornhole. Uh, yeah. You know, I just didn't know where we wanted to go with that or even, um, started, look at it. You know, I just didn't know where we wanted to go with that or even started, look at it. So I figured I'd toss it out there.
You know, I, I don't have a problem, Peg, if you want to put together some kind of an outline. And maybe run it by Rec.
All right. We'll reach out to Rec, Lyons.
I mean, I think as a private event, whoever's organizing it could decide on their own what they wanted or to include or not want to include, how big they want to make it, how small they want to make it.
Correct.
I, I think, I think they get, by, by saying I'm organizing, you get to make those calls.
Right.
But I mean, so Margaret, like around the idea of like special permits and things like that, I, you know, probably need a little bit of guidance on that, you know, what's involved, how to fill it out, who would be involved, like I would assume the fire marshal, I would assume Mr. Hanks. Uh, police, I, I don't know. So again, it's not, it's certainly not urgent. We have enough juggly going on, but wanted to bring it up.
Yep. So once there's a, once there's a plan in motion, or, you know, at least a vision, uh, we can start, we can start working on, you know, what, you know, what, what things they'd have to take care of as they move.
All right, and I know like Clinton has had a great one, um, you know, obviously not last year, but years before, they would just fill the entire common, you know, with their kind of old home day, so I don't know if their parks and rec might be of a resource as well, you know, to those committees. We can always ask, and the most that they can do is tell us no and go away. All right. And my last one, so, one of my favorite conversations, the railroad ties, the junk left behind by CSX, thank you very much. Won't return any of my emails, calls, voicemails, texts. So is there anything, anything that we can do that we could reach out to CSX and say, you don't want it, you know, we'll, we'll take it. I'm sure that there are places around here that dispose of waste, you know, there's a crap ton of metal. I don't know if we could pick that up and sell it to help offset any costs, but it's, it just looks disgusting as you drive, you know, through five corners, over Linden, over Crosby, um, you know, and along Jones Road, and you just see it sitting there, and it's not going anywhere.
Do you, do you think maybe CSX doesn't want those things anymore, and we could just say, if, if you, if you'd like, we can take care of it, we can see whether there's anyone who wants to use it somehow?
Well, you know, a couple of times when I've been whizzing down Linden, there's a CSX truck, so of course, you know, I stop, spin around and like jump out of my car and probably scare the crap out of the guy sitting in the truck. And, you know, I've asked for like supervisor names, which they won't fork over, and they basically said, it's here, we don't want it, we don't care, but that's the guys in the truck. You know, so I would want, you know, up, 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 up for somebody to say, you take it, you own it, you dispose it, you won't charge us. You know, I did reach out to conservation, and they said, obviously, you know, the railroad ties, they're not good for gardening or flowering, but people have, you know, there's other uses for them, you know, to, to put that, so I just.
I have railroad ties that line each side of my driveway.
Yeah, yeah, so for stuff like that, they're okay. You just can't near anything that you eat type of thing.
Right.
So again, it's not, it's not critical, it just bugs me how CSX came through, did their stuff, and then they just ghosted the town and have zero responsibility.
Doesn't the Board of Health have the ability to find for hazards and nuisances?
Don't know.
Can I ask?
I don't think we have the ability to impose fines, but I thought there'd be some, I mean, if someone abandoned a car somewhere in town, wouldn't we have the ability to, to do something?
I'll ask. Oh, Margaret, I'll reach out. I see you writing. I'll do it.
Okay, yeah, the only thing, the only other thing I could think was reaching out to CSX directly in writing. I mean, because we can't just confiscate, you know, what's on our property, obviously, we just need, we need their permission somehow, so.
Yeah.
If the Board of Health can't do it, we can put our heads together and think of something.
Yeah, draft a letter, maybe. Yeah.
Okay, yeah, I just don't know who. The contact that I had was very promising in the beginning and would call me back and text me back, and maybe she blocked me, I don't know, but I just can't get anywhere, and I know that Chief had said that he had pretty much tried, so unless maybe he can fork over that number that he had for his contact, and I can start reaching out and trying, but they came through, what, last year to fix the tracks, and the junk is still here.
Well, you know, it probably is better. Margaret's probably right, you do need to have like a paper trail.
Correct.
Put, put it in writing.
Oh, absolutely, and I, and I would never want like anybody to get hurt, like picking up the ties and, and things like that, and, you know, picking up all the scrap metal that's down there and for somebody to get cut and get hurt, so. Again, it was just one of those, as I drove by today, it aggravated the crap out of me, so I figured that I would ask tonight. All right, I'll start with the Board of Health. I can ask to get on there whenever their next meeting agenda is and ask them and see what their jurisdiction is, and then come back and see what we have for Plan B.
Okay. All right. We do have need for an executive session. Under General Law, Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one A. Number three is to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigation position of the public body, and the chair declares so. Um, this is with the Berlin Firefighters Union, Local five-two-nine-eight, IAF, IAFF. And number seven, to comply with or act under the authority of any general or special law or federal aid required to review, approve, release of executive session meeting minutes. And, and, oh, we will only return to open session to adjourn. So. Keith, I.
Stone, I.
Hawkins, I.